Board of County Commissioners meeting on September the 10th. It's our staff meeting. I'll ask everybody to introduce themselves on a dice.
Chrissy Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Harvey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant County Prosecutor.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. All right, we'll get right to the agenda. Our first presentation is from the Veteran Services Commission on the 2025 Budget Presentation.
Good morning, Commissioner President Alicia Reese, Commissioner Vice President Denise Treehouse, and Commissioner Steffi Summerau-Dumas. And to the remaining members on this board, I'm Orlando Sansa, the Executive Director of the Hamilton County Veteran Service Commission, presenting for you today our 2025 Budget Ask for Appropriations. As you can see, you've all been provided a copy of our Budget Ask slides, directing your attention to really first and foremost laying out the current state of the Veteran Service Commission. As you know, we are coming from a rough patch as a commission just in the last year or so, recovering really from our reputation in Hamilton County. How do you repair a commission that not a lot of people knew that we existed, let alone what we do? And then as well, how do you then continue to do the mission of servicing the veterans here in Hamilton County? So what we've done in the last six months through the leadership, of course, of this Board of County Commissioners, but also the leadership of the Veteran Service Commissioners, currently five of them that are appointed by the Common Pleas Court, and the supporting staff, is we have heard the voices of the veterans in Hamilton County and their families. We have expanded services for them, and we have assisted in giving them those services that they're entitled to. Not only that, is spreading the word of what our commission does and how we can help those veterans get access to those services. And so for the first slide I present to you is really the first time, to my knowledge, is the geographic distribution of expenditure report that this Board of County Commissioners has actually ever seen. So this slide, if we can present the... Oh, it's me, all right. So every year, the Department of Veteran Services compiles data from not just the county VSCs, but also from the Department of Veterans Affairs. And they condense that into a one-slide presentation of connecting the dots with total federal VA dollars spent within a county, and then connecting that to the county revenue spend that the Board of County Commissioners actually then appropriates to the County Veteran Service Commission. And what you see here is the latest GDX report, again geographic distribution of expenditures. What you see here is the 2023 GDX report. And what I want to draw your attention to is really the last column for 2023, or the last row. In the column titled "Total Federal VA Dollars Spent Within the County", as you can see here, that VA federal dollars, $514 million, came into Hamilton County to support the veterans and their families here. Connecting the dots with the last column, which is the county revenue spend, that is the 2023 appropriation of $1.15 million. What that should indicate to the board is really the moral of this story, is that in 2023, for every $1 the Board of County Commissioners spent on the VSC, it helped lead to $462 in VA dollars spent within Hamilton County. As you can see, really, that is broken up into different impact areas: compensation and pension, educational vocational rehabilitation, insurance, medical care, general operating expense, and construction. You're probably asking, how are those dots connected? Well, primarily, the duty and responsibility of the Veteran Service Commission under Ohio law, Section 5901, states that the County Veteran Service Commission is tasked to provide assistance so that the veterans in the county get access to any claims that they may be, any benefits they may be entitled to under local, state, or federal law. A lot of those benefits come from federal law through VA compensation and pension. So if a veteran transitions out of the military, and they may have a service-connected disability, hurt their back, have tinnitus, ringing of the ears, have a bad shoulder, migraines, concussions, all that can be documented and then included in their VA claim for potential compensation for service-connected disability. Not only that, as well pension benefits. That fourth column entitled "Compensation and Pension" is tracking the actual retroactive payments to Hamilton County veterans. So if you look at 2023, $180 million in retroactive compensation and pension benefits got paid from the VA to veterans in Hamilton County. That is directly attributed to the services that our county VSC provides. Our county VSC is currently right now staffed by six full-time Veteran Service Officers. They're all veterans, they're all required to be veterans. And they're tasked with two things primarily. Number one is to assist them in applying for emergency financial assistance. So if they come in, if they live in Hamilton County, they can't pay for rent, utilities, their mortgage because of a financial emergency, they could then seek financial assistance through our office. A portion of our budget entitled Veteran Relief goes to that assistance. But the second thing, and really the primary duty of the Veteran Service Officer, is to actually be the power of attorney, under-power of attorney, for the veterans in seeking and applying for their compensation claims with the VA. So oftentimes what happens is a veteran transitions out and doesn't know that such a service exists. So what they do is one of two things. They either try to file that VA claim themselves, which oftentimes results in a denial by the VA. They don't know how to fill out the forms, they don't know the language that should be included in the form, and they get denied. The other thing is that they seek services through paid means. They hire someone to be their quote-unquote "power of attorney", and then they pay what is typical a commission to that individual. It could be an attorney, it could be someone that used to work for the VA, understands the ins and outs. Some of those commissions range from 30% to 40% of the retroactive compensation payment. So this veteran may be entitled to $100,000 in retroactive payment for an injury that they sustained in the military. Well, that person that filled out their VA claim and submitted it on their behalf now gets a 30% to 40% cut in the form of a commission for filing that claim. Ohio is one of the few states that actually has, by law, Veteran Service Officers that offer that service for free. Not only do we offer that service for free to our Hamilton County veterans, they are credentialed and trained to provide that service. So our staff of Veteran Service Officers are trained by the state, they take an exam, and now they are qualified to actually not just represent the veteran before the VA, but to fill out those forms appropriately. So that the hope is that they don't get denied, but they get granted initially, upon the first time they submit that claim, they get granted those benefits right away that they're entitled to. So that compensation and pension column is a direct result of the services that we provide. So the moral of the story is that for every $1 that this board in the past and currently has appropriated, just in 2023, it has led, it has helped lead to $462 in VA dollars spent within the county. With that context, it now brings me to where we are currently positioned when it comes to our budget. For 2024, our budget was about $1.5 million. You could see the breakdown there in terms of personnel and veteran relief, also breaking down into advertising. That number of $1.49 million is, lack of a better word, egregiously small for a county our size that services or is tasked to service the amount of veterans that we have compared to other counties in the state. 2023 numbers, we have over 40,000 veterans in Hamilton County. Just for comparison, our sister county to the north in Butler County has 20,000 veterans. They operated with a budget in 2023 of $2.1 million. To our sister county Claremont County, to our east, they have 12,000 veterans that they're tasked to support. They have also a $2 million budget. In comparison to our sister county that's identical in size, Montgomery County, and demographic, their veteran population is 38,000, just slightly less than ours. They operated also with a $2 million budget. The two larger counties, as you all know, Hamilton County is the third-largest county by population, but also by veteran population. Cuyahoga County, 66,000 veterans, they operated with a $8 million budget. Franklin County, 65,000 veterans, they operated with a $7.8 million budget. So $1.5 million budget, we have been getting by. We have been using that budget in these last six months to again expand services. We've expanded services to now include, to very soon include eye care, dental care, financial literacy, expanded transportation programs. But it is, to my estimate and the estimate of our current Board of Veteran Service Commissioners, inadequate to service the over 40,000 veterans. With that being said, this is our budget request for 2025. It is to increase this budget from a $1.49 million budget to a $2.8 million budget. Allocating more resources to veteran relief versus personnel, but also being smart with the personnel budget and still expanding our staff capacity and need. But also, as you can see there, utilize some of those resources, about 4% of the budget for a capital expenditure of now vans that are wheelchair-accessible to now be able to pick up veterans around Hamilton County that may not have access to the bus route and bring them a door-to-door service to and from their medical appointments. Condensing that, that the request of an increase is to support growth in veterans seeking assistance, expanding our services offered, and being able to make sure that we have the staff capacity in order to service those increased number of veterans coming into our office. Here is a breakdown chart of really what that budget would be allocated to on an itemized basis. You see there, broken down into personnel, veterans relief, advertising, and capital outlay. The 2024 current budget of $1.49 million, it currently supports a staff of, just like I said, six Veteran Service Officers, three admin support staff, and five commissioners that, yes, are paid. They are required to, under the statute, to be reasonably compensated for their service to the commission on a part-time basis, and you see that breakdown there. Veteran relief, currently right now, $518,000 going to those categories: rent assistance, food assistance, those are our monthly average amounts. And then also broken down into outreach initiatives. Our advertising budget there, we've had a significant increase to our budget this year simply because of, again, wanting to adequately repair the reputation of the community, that we are a entity that does good work and will continue to do good work for the veterans in Hamilton County. But we needed to get that message out. The 2025 breakdown is there, is that we, the board, wishes to increase the personnel amount to an additional three full-time Veteran Service Officers in comparison right now after a phenomenal and well-attended and well-supported Veterans Appreciation Day event on July 20th, that of course, without the leadership of this Board of County Commissioners, would not have been possible. But because of that, veterans, more veterans now know that we exist just from word of mouth. They saw our services that we provided and the resource partners that we work with at the ballpark on July 20th. And before, we used to have a one-week appointment schedule that was scheduled out. Well, after July 20th, we've seen that increase to three to four weeks of wait time. So wanting to make sure that we've got the appropriate full-time staff to service more of those veterans into 2025 and beyond, that's three full-time service officers, three part-time staff in the form of part-time drivers, again, all veterans, that will then be, that will then be the ones driving the wheelchair-accessible vans and picking up these veterans to and from their medical appointments. Transportation, and this is gleaning from really the advice and counsel of our sister Veteran Service Commissions around the state, transportation could get very cumbersome to now try to manage. Once word gets out that we have expanded transportation services, we don't want to find ourselves in a position where now it is just so chaotic that we're not adequately servicing our veterans to and from their medical appointments. So one full-time transportation manager on staff as well. And that budget maintains the five commissioner appointing authority right now on the board. I do want to point out, and this is again for the informed decision-making process of this board. It is correct that under 5901, if a county that operates with over 500,000 individuals in population, Hamilton County being one of them, asks for more than 110% of their current budget going into the ensuing fiscal year, which we have done in this case, it does give the authority to this Board of County Commissioners the ability to appoint up to six more Veteran Service Commissioners onto our current Board of Five Veteran Service Commissioners. To the board, you do have that authority. You can exercise that authority now, if you so choose, because that triggering mechanism is from the time we submitted this budget. Just to lay out for you that it will come at a cost to not just the veterans in this county. We will have to allocate the resources that we've allocated elsewhere, mainly from veteran relief, to the supporting the Veteran Service Commissioners for their stipend, their benefits, their travel and training. But it will also come at a cost to the taxpayer because it will be, again, an increased expenditure that was not being currently allocated. But all that being said, I, as the director, understand the argument when it comes to transparency, accountability. We are increasing our budget, so that could very well be a rationale to now have an increase in oversight from this board. With that, I would add that there is a context for an increased board around the state for Veteran Service Commissioners. There's an argument from my counterparts across the state that it could very well impede the progress of this board. Right now, this Board of Five Commissioners, as best as we try to agree on everything, we don't. They're five individuals with five personalities, five different directions at times for where to take this board. Sometimes it's difficult to reach consensus, but I'm grateful that we do, all for the benefit of the commission. I don't know of any to date of any Veteran Service Commissions around Ohio that operate with more than a five-person commission. That being said, our sister Montgomery County did at one point operate with more than five commissioners. They operated with an 11-person commission. Their Board of County Commissioners saw fit at that time in the late 80s and 90s to exercise that authority, and they appointed up to the six. It was, to their estimation, grossly a disservice to the veterans. It impeded progress. There was no consensus that they could agree to oftentimes, and so they went back down to a five-person commission. But that's the context I could provide for all of you. That being said, moving on to veteran relief, this is really where the expansion of services comes in. As you see there, we're going to continue to provide emergency financial assistance, but we're going to expand what that means. We're adding eye care, providing glasses for veterans and eye exams that may not be eligible for whatever reason with the VA, providing now dental care, providing emergency tooth extraction, a dental exam, a annual dental cleaning. That's what our other sister counties do. We'd like to do that here in Hamilton County as well. Our outreach, our outreach will also grow, is because of the July 20th Veterans Appreciation Day event, not only do more veterans in Hamilton County and their families know we exist, other veteran partner organizations know we exist. So we want to continue to partner with them. We want to support them and their initiatives as well. We've started to do that. We've partnered with organizations on the nonprofit side, like Easter Seals, for their Honor Ride event, or the Association of United States Army for their Veterans Appreciation Day event last month. But we want to continue to do that because other partners are now looking to us, not just for support, they're looking to us now for leadership. Because we are the tip of the spear when it comes to government entities in Hamilton County that have the sole singular mission of supporting our veterans. Other programs and outreach initiatives that we'd like to venture into, a Veterans Hall of Fame, is to honor our veterans from Harrison to the East Side, is support them in, and this is just conceptual right now, but what would it look like to have a Veterans Hall of Fame that honors the veterans that have passed through Hamilton County? The last one there, Financial Literacy Program. It's not only a priority for this current commission, it's a priority for me, just understanding how much financial literacy has impacted my life as a veteran and when my wife, as a veteran, transitioned out. We have a lot of veterans that come into our office that don't have any financial background or even the basics of budgeting, saving, how to pay down debt. What would it look like for Hamilton County to be the premier county in the state of Ohio that offers financial literacy for our veterans when they come in? Both when they try to receive emergency financial assistance, but also when they're getting retroactive compensation claims in the amounts of thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars? How do we help them to financially succeed for the future? Lastly, there's the van transportation service. That's our estimated budget for what will be really a new form of outreach and service with these wheelchair-accessible vans. Maintaining them, fueling them, wrapping them with the same type of wrapping that we see with our Metro, at least two of our Metro buses, that then continue to spread the word for the Veteran Service Commission. So that's laid out as well. Drawing your attention now to advertising, operating with $100,000 advertising budget. You see there that there's a projected decrease from what we spent this year. Part of that is we really, we want to be smarter with the way we spend dollars with advertising. With the July 20th event, we realized that about two weeks out, not a lot of people knew that the event was happening, so the VSC, in partnership with the Board of County Commissioners, stepped up our advertising game and reallocated some funds from veteran relief to advertising to get that word out. We're glad we did. We just want to make sure that we maintain that outreach initiative through advertising and marketing, but being smart with the dollars in the process. And then lastly is capital outlay. That is the three wheelchair-accessible vans that would be a capital expenditure going into fiscal year '25. So that is my presentation, pending your questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. And I'll start out and then open it up to my colleagues. I think you're right, we have come a long way. And with the Veterans Appreciation First-Time Event, we've got Metro buses. At that event, we ran into over 3,000 folks, and it was a great partnership between the VSC, the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, as well as 70-plus partners. And a lot of people who came there, who saw the different partnerships, they said, "Man, I didn't know this was available to me, or I didn't know I could be a part of it." And also had families and widows, and even had Veterans Court there where they expunged a person on the spot. So it was historic, and I certainly think it's something that should continue because it does give us a chance to really reach out in a leadership way. I don't think anybody had a Great American Ballpark-type of event in the whole state of Ohio, maybe not even in the country. So I want to thank you for that. One of the things that I'm looking for, and I mentioned this when we met, was that I'm looking for institutionalization of things, and not on personalities, because all of us at some point, you know, will be moving on, just like the VSC was put together. And I had to learn about it because the way they put it together, I think, is a strange way in the state of Ohio. They did it many, many, many decades ago. It may not be really the best way to move forward, but it is in the law. And so they've institutionalized. But when there is a problem, when Craig McKee got the problem, he presented it, it came back on the board. As though we had the authority, the power, the appointments, we were just passing through them funds, not necessarily. This is even new. I think this might be the first time that y'all came and presented your actual budget. Your predecessor wasn't coming and presenting it. It was the first time that we got, at least, I know for me, we got even a report of how many veterans are we helping, and it was so disappointing that what we were helping was 300, 400, 500 a year, but not when we got 40,000 people. So I'm glad to see that we're looking at trying to help more veterans, because I think that's what we all want to do. I also indicated that I'm an ROI person, so I definitely would like to, whatever we do, if we're going to do this, it's going to help this many more veterans. I mean, what's the actual number of veterans that we help? I do like the fact that you talk about a service that I think is a major need for veterans. Like you said, the paperwork and not being preyed upon by maybe for-profit companies coming in and taking percentage of their funds because they don't know how to fill out paperwork. And I thought, I said, "Well, we'd like to go mobile", and you said you've got a mobile opportunity now where you could be mobile and out, maybe partner with the 511 relief bus and what have you, so that we can make sure that our veterans are able to get this paperwork filled out, and you do it at no charge. And most people didn't, like you said, know about it. So I'm happy to see that. My questions, though, go into the part where we're, part of the budget request is adding additional staff. And in there, you've got it at $462,380. It'll give you three new Veteran Service Officers, three new part-time drivers, one new transportation manager. And I would hope that, and I'm not against those, and then you've got the commissioners. Now me, I haven't made a decision if we should appoint more people. I'm going to be honest with you, I didn't really like what happened. I didn't like the fact I didn't appoint these folks. I didn't like the point, the fact that they didn't have to come and report to us. And I didn't like the fact that we take the hit, but they don't have to report to us, they don't have to consult with us, but we got to take the responsibility. And for me, I think one of the flaws of the system was that we don't have a real connection. It's based on personality. So maybe we get to work with this group, but another group might come, and we might not work with that group. And just like it does, different commissioners were around all the time. So I wanted to emboss me. Like I told you, you was over at the prosecutor's office, you still ain't got back with me, but you done moved to another position. But my point was, I needed something permanent, not, you know, I got a good person and they want to talk to us this time. I get another person that don't want to talk to us this time. They don't have to talk to the media, but we gotta talk to the media. They don't have to talk to the media, but we gotta talk to the media. So what I'm looking at here, I know you talked about this, and I'm not saying I'm going for this, but I think I wanted to put it on the table. The five commissioners that serve on your board for the VSC, and for those who are watching may not know how it's set up, set up by the state. The courts make the appointments, and we make no appointments. We don't vote on it, we don't know about it. And we approve the budget that you request, but if you request more, 10% more, we get a chance possibly to make some appointments if we wish. And that has been the hesitancy in the past. Your predecessor did not want us making any appointments. The commissioners that serve on your board, they do get paid. And on here, you say you've got $52,000 for five commissioners. You came back and said if we were to get additional commissioners, it would have a cost. What I'm seeing is that on here, you have a cost of these transportation managers and a couple of drivers, and you're at $462,380. You're currently at 862,866. Is that where you're at, 860,286? So that'd take you up to 1.3 million in additional costs for these additional people. But what I was looking at, if you were to hypothetically, not saying we're going to do this, but hypothetically, if we added five people, you got five, the total cost would be $104,000. Now, you deduct from the 462,000 you want to add, we still would have $358,380 to still add some people, and we could do both. So I wanted to highlight that. I'm not saying, I'm saying do that.
Sure.
But I'm saying we're asking for $462,380 to add staff. That would be a transportation manager, a part-time, two part-time drivers. And then you've got the three Veteran Services Officers, which we, I support, but if we were to tone that down a little bit, still helping the, you got the three people you could add, and then you can, you know, you can, the manager and drivers can be together, possibly. You would still have $358,380, and we still could add and have some representation on this board. My understanding, we've got some new people and everything, but some of those people that was on the board, they didn't feel they had to talk to us, they didn't feel they had to come see us, they didn't feel they had to answer to us, they didn't have to answer to the media, they didn't have to answer to the taxpayers, they didn't have to answer to the veterans. We don't want that no more. And now, and all those people have not gotten off of there. Some people still hanging around. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'm not saying that's where I'm going. I know we've got a gap to fill and all of that, but just on the strength of what has transpired with the veterans and the lack of service, the lack of opportunity for them, and I know we all want to do a better job, I just wanted to put that on the table. And then my last question, though, is, you have this chart here, for every dollar we brought in, which you brought in from the VA, is that the only, is there any other possible funding out there besides us and maybe the VA dollars? Is there anything else that we have to leave on the table?
Yes, Commissioner. Yeah, so that's why we've explicitly used the word "it has helped" lead to that. And that's why I laid out for the board that compensation and pensions column, because that's the bread and butter of what our service officers do, just like I mentioned. But there is, there's other columns there, like vocational rehabilitation and assistance and education. That column, yes, our Veteran Service Officers, when a veteran comes in and says, "I'd like to go back to school." "Great, do you know about your post-9/11 GI bill?" That could be the extent of where we meet the veteran when it comes to their educational need. But those VA dollars are coming again from the VA, not necessarily from the VSC. But again, we at least helped that connection point, you know? So could there be other entities? Absolutely. Any other entity that is directing a veteran to the VA helps in that, but just laying for you at least the compensation and pension, because that's where we can pinpoint, say, "That's what we did. Yeah, that's the work we did."
Okay, thank you. I just want to say to our administrator and my colleagues, what I'm interested in yourself, I'm interested in fixing a broken system, this system we've had around. If it wasn't for Craig McKee, it'd still be going. We got to have, that system got to be fixed, so it doesn't matter who is in charge, who is up here, we make sure that the veterans are taken care of. So I'm looking forward to working with, continue to work with you to get to
Thank you.
... into that system. Vice President, Rea.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Good to see other members here in the audience that are part of the group, you're part of the team. So I want to applaud the work of the administration and the board for bringing us to, we've had quite a few conversations about how we can do better as a community to serve veterans, and I think you've responded to that. I agree that we didn't have a lot of information in the past related to the VSC and the budget. We simply got a request, we knew it was for veterans, we said yes, and that was kind of the end of it. But Craig McKee brought it to our attention, and then we had people come in from the public, veterans in particular, and talk about their experience with the VSC, what they would like to see, you know, if we were visioning as to how we could do better. And so I think all of those things together led us to this point. And so I think the response of the VSC has been very helpful in light of the conversations and, as Commissioner Reese said, some of the pressures that we saw, you know, during those conversations. So a couple of things, you know, we had asked, and really the veterans had asked, that if we were to try to do better, what does that look like? So it's increased services, you need increased capacity to deliver those services, and then increase awareness so the veterans know the services exist. So that's kind of, for me,
Yes.
... that's where we needed to go. And so when I look at the increased budget, and to my math, it's like 1.3 increase or so to last year's budget. And I appreciate this chart, I didn't, when I spoke with you, I did not have this chart relative to the other counties, and it's very helpful to put this in context, because we knew we were lower than most of our comparative set, and we're quite a bit lower than most of our comparative sets. So I think that's very helpful for us to level set this conversation. But I don't want to get into too far into the weeds with some of what you've presented, but rather to focus on the Veteran Relief part.
Yes.
And I see that you've got increases to all of the services
Yes.
... that are being provided, whether it's rent or food, utilities, hygiene, clothing, bus, other, and dental and eye care. And I think that is a great idea, that's what we heard, and that's what's in front of us. So I appreciate that. Also, some of the awareness framework has been increased as well. So I think that is all absolutely right on track, and then the two new service officers, obviously, to deploy all that, I think is really important. But I do have a couple of questions. So the one, the last item related to the vans, so Metro, and we talked a little bit about this, so we've got a partnership with Metro right now, where they have generously said they will split the cost of providing free transportation for veterans to doctor's appointments and to the VA. So no veteran should be paying for transportation to the doctor's appointments or to the VA. And they wrap the buses to make veterans aware of it, and we've been trying to promote that. Do we have any sense of how that's going by way of the volume of veterans that are using that service, which would lead to my question about the need for these vans? I know that other counties, VSEs have vans, but I would suggest that other counties don't have the transit system that we do.
Correct.
They just don't have a sorta in their community
Correct.
... where we have access to that kind of public transit partnership that we've utilized. So I wonder why three? And I'm also kind of looking at the budgetary context of this, because obviously an increase, not only for the vans themselves, but also for the personnel to drive them and to coordinate them. And so how did you land on three? And has there been, or will you be evaluating the need for those, given the fact that we're partnering with sort of
Yes.
... to kind of do the same thing?
Yes. Our Vice President, fair questions. When it comes to what's currently being provided right now in bus passes and also Metro Access, if a veteran needs wheelchair accessibility, Metro Access has, again, through their great support, lended assistance in offering that to veterans. I know we had talked that there may just need to be some clarification on where or what limit, if any, that Metro Access bus can go. It was our understanding it's only within a mile of a bus route. Hence why, when this budget was being created, we looked into the future and went, "Well, if there is a limit to where Metro Access can go, we certainly don't want to disservice veterans that are outside of that radius of one mile." The only other way to do that would be through vans of our own that we staff and we pick up. The other thing, too, is just anecdotal, and that is that there are some veterans, some of it because of preference or maybe even PTSD or trauma. They don't like using the bus. And so when it comes to numerical data, for example, last month's report, we only distributed three bus passes in all of Hamilton County. Now, that could be because, again, we need to step up and continue to get the word out that we exist, you know, you can utilize the bus at any time. But the other thing could be that anecdotal piece, that there is just some veterans that are not comfortable with using the bus. I personally spoke to a veteran two days ago, and he was adamant. "Mr. Sansa, I do not like the bus. I will not use the bus. How else can I get here?" Well, that's when we stepped it up and offered, again, this is a growing expansion of services to kind of fill this van gap, we offered to reimburse his service. And he said, "Well, I've never used Uber before, you know, or Lyft, or I don't have that on my app." It would have been really nice to be able to tell him, "You know what, sir? We're going to pick you up. And not only that, it's going to be one of your brothers or sisters in arms that's going to be in a van, and that's going to pick you up in your house. Stay at the parking lot while you wait for your appointment, and then bring you back home." So that's kind of the piece for why we saw that, at least here in Hamilton County, we could benefit, the veteran population could benefit from vans. How we got to the number of three, that's really a starting point. That way, we kind of looked at what's a reasonable amount to start with, that again, doesn't suddenly allocate a lot more resources than we need to in the capital outlay year. As I visited the surrounding counties, particularly the ones that have vans that are in operation and have this transportation system already in place, they recommended to us that really to operate in your county, based on their size, what they've seen for years, you really need six in Hamilton County. Well, I said, "Well, I think six is a lot." The board and I agreed that I think six is a lot for the first year, especially should we, again, transition into a new building, you know, what that looks like. We don't want to commit to six already. So we started with half of that, we started with three, and we believe that that was at least a reasonable start to get us going in that direction.
Okay, that's helpful. Yeah, I just didn't know where the number
Yes, ma'am.
... came from. And I recognize that some people are uncomfortable on the bus because there are so many other people on the bus. So, but I would be interested in the evaluation that you guys conduct to see, boy, if we're only issuing that few bus tokens, people don't know, the veterans just don't know.
Yeah.
So maybe that will roll into the marketing effort related to the vans, too, because you have to market both of them.
Right.
Right? So, okay, that's very helpful. And then the last thing I have is related to the commissioners and this idea that you've asked for more than 10% over your previous budget, and so we have the authority, or rather the ability, to add people to the board in a way that we've not done in the past. And so I had a letter that I sent to you guys a while back saying that I don't have any interest in appointing six people to this commission, even though we're allowed to do it. I don't know where my colleagues are, that sounds like not everyone's landed on how we should proceed on that front. But I would, so I'm open to other ideas, whether, I get the notion that the more people, the more challenging it can be. We've got a One Ohio Board of like 28 people, it's challenging to get a quorum and then to manage that amount of people. So I understand that. But five, seven, nah, you know, not as big of a difference, really. And I've said on many boards that you have seven or nine people and they function fine. So I don't know, that's so much of a thing. And the idea of the compensation, then, comes up, and so I didn't even realize that the commissioners got compensation. I mean, so I was surprised to hear that, to be honest, because I don't know that we have maybe one other board that has compensation and it is not to the degree that the VSC gets it. So I would wonder if, instead of thinking about the compensation, is this dollar amount per commissioner, set a budget for the compensation for the commissioners, no matter what, how many there are, and that's the budget, and then you operate within that budget. It's just an idea. I have no strong thoughts one way or the other. And the other thing to remind is that we've got legislation at the state level right now. It's had three hearings, it's, Rep. Stewart has offered it, about the changing the makeup of the VSC. So that still operates with five. He's just removing two and adding two to that makeup. There is an amendment floating around that suggests that you add two instead, so you're not removing anybody, but rather adding a couple people from more current wars, so that the makeup of the boards would become younger and more relevant to the experience of veterans from more current wars, or rather, ones that have recently passed. And so we actually, I don't know if it was a "we" or an "I," but I offered that idea, and he seemed to be receptive to it. So I don't know where that's headed and if it's going to pass, but something to think about
Sure.
... in terms of the number
Yes.
... of commissioners, and then the compensation related to that. So, again, I haven't landed on that particular piece. I'm interested to hear what my colleagues have to say about it, but just, I'm just kind of thinking through some of the dynamics there that would have to, you know, how we'd have to respond to added people, added compensation, what that looks like. But in the end, I want to thank the board, thank yourself, for getting us to a point where it's clear that we're increasing on the fronts that we had heard were most important, which is services, capacity to provide services, and then the outreach to make people aware of what we have to offer. So I appreciate that work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you for your presentation. Several comments, I'll leave some for later, probably. If we're serious about reaching 40,000 veterans, and I look at the budget, we've increased dramatically according to your budget. I'll start with the small things. I also wondered about the three wheelchair accessible vans, because you have that large van, a large bus, but it's not accessible. So I thought about the possibility of reducing the number of wheelchair accessible vans at this time. I also looked at a more gradual increase of staff. I think we've added too many staff. That's what I think. I know people think they're overworked, and I'm sure they are, but as we start reaching more veterans, we will need more staff. But should there be a gradual increase? Also, I'm not sure what the commissioners do. If I could get a summary of
Absolutely.
... this is what the commissioner does. And you mentioned that it's a stipend, you know, it's more like a salary. A lot of people don't make $52,000, so, and I'm sure, excuse me, I'd like to see what they do
Yes.
... commissioners do. And then the executive director, I need to know the salary for the executive director.
Yes, ma'am. So first and foremost, as to the commissioners. So the commissioners, again, that their responsibility is dictated by?
Yeah, you, oh, well, maybe somebody else wants to know, so you can do it now. Okay.
Oh, sure, yeah. Is that their responsibility is dictated by 5901 of the ORC, they're tasked to provide that oversight to the board? And now they can delegate that responsibility when it comes to the daily functions and all the county Veteran Service Commissions have. They've delegated that out to support staff, whether that's the director and then by extension Veteran Service Officers. But they mainly provide the same sort of authority and responsibility that any other board does. Now, their frequency of when they meet and what they, how much they want to be involved in the day-to-day process, for example, emergency financial assistance, how much do they want to be involved in the process of actually approving every application that comes in through the door? There are some counties, smaller counties, to where a veteran will not get approved for financial assistance unless the board were to approve that application. So they meet, you know, once a week versus monthly. There are other counties that are larger to where they monthly. There are other counties that are larger, to where they have to bring in more veterans that are asking for financial assistance. They simply do not want to be a roadblock to getting the aid that they need, because it's an emergency. So, they task that by their own policies and procedures that they're allowed to create. We have our own, other counties have their own. They can delegate that responsibility to the support staff. For example, Veteran Service Officer, you are allowed to recommend approval up to this amount for rent utilities. Executive Director, you are allowed to approve this amount. If it's over this amount, then you must take it to the board. That's how we operate in Hamilton County. But, aside from that, the commissioners are also really just the face of the organization to the public. So, outreach events, they're doing speaking engagements for Veterans Day, Memorial Day. If, if there's an interview that the, that the local media wants to do on the Veteran Service Office, then the commissioners can step in as well. But it's that.
That helps, yeah. That helps. I noticed there was a reduction. I'm gonna move on to something else. A reduction in advertisement. I understand that, because you're doing more outreach. So, I certainly understand that. But, one thing I don't understand is when we're talking about trying to reach all our veterans, the amount of increase for direct services was about $17,000 for rent, food, utilities, hygiene. We did not put enough money into direct services, in my opinion. You know, maybe we're looking at the ones we, the numbers we normally serve, but for rent, just to go up 7,000, 7,000 more, I just basically do not think the direct services are enough. And if we gradually increase staff, and put more into the direct services like rent and utilities, it would make me feel better, and more veterans would feel better because of money. We won't run out of that money. I really like the iCare Dental idea. I think it needs to be more than the 5,000 a month. So, you know, when you look at personnel, and the, and the pie is so big for personnel, and I know there's nothing in the revised code of how much, how, what percentage of your budget should be personnel. I just want to see more.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to see more for direct services. And...
If I may, Commissioner Dumas, to that point, is that for rent, for example, there's two really competing things that we've identified as a commission. Is that, when you offer rent assistance typically, up until 30 days ago, that was a direct check made out in the name of the veteran. We're granted under the Auditor's Office authority to issue those checks directly to our office. So, a veteran would get rent assistance made out to their name. And what we found, not just through our eyes, but the eyes of our sister entities like the VA HUD-VAS program, a lot of those veterans don't use that money for what they asked for. And so, what we wanted to do is more of an accountability measure for where those dollars are going, to make sure that it's actually going to where the veteran asked. So, for rent, we started 30 days ago, a direct vendor payment system now. So, if a veteran comes in for rent assistance, it's gonna come to the landlord directly. It's gonna be made out. Now, it takes a little bit more time, because now we need a W-9, we gotta make sure they're in the auditor system. But that way, it's accountability measure, because at the, you know, at the end of the day, we have to be good stewards of taxpayer money. So, that's where you see where, now, that rent projection, that's per month, you know, and that's based on historical data. We did, what we saw was a reasonable increase of 50% more on top, across the board. Now, we could be off, but that veteran relief bucket has the ability to be moved around through sub-accounts. So, if we spend a little bit less on rent, we can take some from utilities. If we spent more, and then vice versa. But, I just want to identify, for rent and utilities, anything that we can do, direct vendor payment. Now, as you can imagine, that number might go down for veterans that apply, because, I, I hate to say it, but the sad truth are some people, people out there, people out there that just wants to take advantage of the government system, okay, whether veteran or not. So, how do you make sure they're getting access to all their, their services that they're entitled to and the help, but also an accountability piece? That's why we did that, and we just did a modest increase of 50%, a reasonable increase of 50% more for, for each.
Okay, and that system is good. The vendor system is good. We used that with JFS when we were, the checks went straight to the landlord. I was wondering, even as we talk about commissioners, the five commissioners, could one of them be the, the manager of transportation? I see you want to hire a new transportation manager. Maybe you could designate that that would be their responsibility. I'm just trying to see how we can reduce the staffing in order to increase the amount of direct services, so.
Yes, ma'am. We can look into that. I do know that there are some sections of the Ohio Revised Code that prohibit the commissioners from doing certain responsibilities. For example, a commissioner cannot serve in the capacity of executive director. That would be a conflict that they've identified. You know, we would have to get clarification from the prosecutor's office on whether there could be an argument that having a commissioner serve in a staff capacity that's paid greater than their compensation as a commissioner could also be a conflict. So, but, your point's well taken. We'd look into that.
And lastly, I believe I asked the salary of the executive director.
Yes, the salary of the executive director is dictated by the Veteran Service Commissioners. It's my understanding that when I was offered this position about 90 days ago, that that's compensation was set with reasonable rates across the entire state for Veteran Service Commissioners. So, my compensation is set at 130,000 this, this current year.
Okay. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I do want to go back to that one question, though, about, I want to indicate on the services side, when we say we did a 50% increase, we gotta remember now, we were not doing anything. You know what I'm saying? We went from zero dollars for glasses. So, I just want to make sure that that's true. Increase is really gonna give us something.
Right.
Because we were, for so long, in the wrong direction. So, I just wanted to highlight that. The other thing is, I know we always come with the bad side, say, "Oh, these people, people are breaking the law on this." I'm talking about, out of 40,000, majority of them are not breaking the law, and they're not getting helped. And they feel like, that's why they did the, they did the Channel 9 expose, was that they were just not getting the help that they were supposed to be getting. So, I just wanted to make sure on that side, when we looked at rent. And then, the other thing I want to ask Mr. Ludo, maybe we can get with VSC and Mr. Ludo, I want to know how many of those people, because we wasn't helping them, that we were helping them on our side with JFS. How many veterans have we helped on, on the JFS side, that if we had it on the VSC side, we could have helped even more citizens in Hamilton County? But, we, people were coming to our bus and coming to our side, because they had nowhere else to go. I want to know how many getting the SNAP benefits, how many over here getting the rental assistance out of our, we gave out $100 million to the landlords. All of our stuff went directly to landlords, directly to Duke Energy, all of those things. But, I want to know on our side, because what I want to do is, how do we stretch our money?
Right.
If VSC is taking care of the veterans like it's supposed to, then that gives us people who are non-veterans, we could help on this side. Now, everybody gets help. So, I wanted to just bring that up. When we said, "We gave them 50% more," you was at zero dollars for glasses in one of your reports, so 50% more might be, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
You went from zero to 10. I just want to make sure
Yes, yes.
That we look at where we were, and you were coming in with new, and I think we went up. And the other thing, I just want to say this. We went up on the salaries. That's why I want to, I really want to get some commissioners over there, because the commissioners voted for themselves to get a raise. And then, in your job, no offense.
Clarification, Madam President. So, the
Did they get a raise?
The Ohio Revised Code states that the Board of County Commissioners sets the salary for the Veteran Service Commissioners, not the commissioners themselves.
But they set your salary.
That's correct, yes.
I mean, not you as a person, but you have
Correct, yes.
And I thought it was at 123, and now it's at 130.
The previous, the previous executive directors.
123,000, I'm sorry. Now, it's at 130,000.
Correction. The, the, my predecessor departed with 135,000 salary.
Okay, so he had more.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, well, that's good to know. But I do think on the services side, maybe we could work on those.
Yes. Madam President, if I could just point this out, too, is that we are, again, we want to make sure that we are helping out all the veterans in Hamilton County as best as we can. If we can't help them out, then the answer is not no. It is that, I'm sorry, we can't help you out, but here is our sister entity. It's important, I, I think, at least for the public, to, to understand that we are bound by law, though, with certain guidelines when it comes to the, the, the distribution of emergency financial assistance. It can only be given to veterans that have a good discharge status. So...
No, we understand that. We're not talking about the bad ones. We're talking about there's a whole bunch of good ones.
Right, oh, yeah, absolutely.
They're not getting any help. They packed this room out. You weren't here at that time. But, the other thing is, they've been going to these other places, because they said they could get better service. Now, I know we
Other counties.
Yeah, the counties. They've been getting better. People tell, stop me all the time. I'll run over here, because I can get more service, and that's what we're trying to correct. So, I just wanted to make sure on, I think it was a good point brought up about the, the services side, and maybe we can, there needs to be a little boundaries. But I want to go back to what you said real quick. The commissioners that are the VSC, people get confused, because there's a bunch of commissioners around. Not this Board of Commissioners, but the VSC. You're saying we set the salary?
Correct.
Okay.
Under 5901.
That's something to know.
Reasonable salaries set by the county commissioners.
Got it, okay. That's all I needed. Commissioner Dumas, I'm sorry.
One last question. And I remember you guys gave us a chart before, the number of veterans that you served last year. Do you remember? It was like 300, or maybe not even that much?
No, that's
It was a low number of veterans that
For, for which?
Any services, and you had a list.
No, that, that is not accurate. So, for, for last year, we, we averaged, I mean, again, for financial assistance, 50 veterans a month was, was coming in for emergency financial assistance. So, but that doesn't include, again, the amount of veterans that may not qualify for major emergency financial assistance, don't need financial assistance, but need a service claim filled out. We're now currently tracking on the claim side, how many veterans are just coming through our, our doors like we are for emergency financial assistance, because there's dollars attached to the, the veterans that are coming in, yeah. But it's
I might want to track all of it, all the veterans coming in, because for that 40,000, we're nowhere near, I wouldn't even say 10%.
Sure.
So, is it on, I didn't see it on here, but I'd like to know what
Yes, so, so, at Hamilton County, 2023 was 518. That's in this chart that you saw here.
This, this.
Yes.
So, I knew it was a
518.
518. In comparison, Claremont County, 622, Butler County, 231. So, we doubled Butler County. And then, also for Montgomery County, which is identical in population and size, 576. So, we're
Like 600.
We're, we're about the same to other counties.
All those counties are terrible. If that's all they're serving
Sure.
Seeing. So, I wouldn't brag about, not that you're bragging, but
Just a comparison.
Yeah, I mean, we need to do better for our veterans, and we all know that, so.
Yes, agreed, agreed.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Board. Thank you.
Okay, now, we will go to items two and three. Turnover to Mr. Ludo.
Can I have a minute just for
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had closed you out.
That's all right. I apologize. Commissioner Dumas, you had a misunderstanding, I believe, about the salary for the commissioners. We do not make 52,000 a year. That is, I get $500 a month. That's it. It is not a per commissioner salary. It's not 52,000 per commissioner. That is the 52,000 for the total of all five commissioners. So, we only get a $500 stipend. So, for clarification, so ironically, when I was helping plan the Veteran Appreciation Day, and coming down here several times a day, I actually spent more in parking than I got paid back after taxes. So, that is, and the other thing, too, is I understand you, to talk about, you guys set our, our pay. By tweaking that per Ohio law and Ohio Attorney General's opinion, if you change our pay, it doesn't affect us until a new commissioner starts his next term. So, whatever we're paid currently in this term is what will be paid until the end. The only commissioner you would affect is whoever starts after you make that new payment schedule. So, and I know, talking about growing too fast for our office, we're now, since the Appreciation Day, we're now four weeks sometimes to schedule veterans. We are at a need now for more staff to service the veterans of Hamilton County. We can't grow fast enough. We need more staff. It is a need now, desperately.
I agree with, I mean, I agree with you.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, we can do it gradually. You don't have to, you know, break
Yes. But we need more service officers, definitely.
Yeah, we need more flexibility as we look at the managers for transportation.
Yes, ma'am.
But I appreciate it.
That's just, I want to clarify, because I understood, I saw your eyes when, yeah. We, I definitely do not make, so, yeah. So, but thank you for that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, you wanted to say something?
No.
Okay. We got you. We got you. Okay, Mr. Ludo, items two and three.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, item two, and items two and three are related today. They are a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase agreement for acquisition of real estate and improved property at 1701 Mercy Place in Cincinnati, Ohio, as well as item three, which is a budget adjustment, the amount of $3 million for the deposit on that acquisition and due diligence expenses. I do have a brief presentation I wanted to walk through, Commissioners. You've seen most of this before. There is a little bit new, but just to set the stage. So, first and foremost, for anyone who may be watching at home, as the Board is very well aware, the, the county owns and operates a large amount of real estate, a large number of buildings. Downtown alone, we have roughly six buildings over 2.5 million square feet of real estate. We are routine, as it relates to our facility space, we are routinely looking for ways to do better, to be more efficient, to be more effective with the homes for our employees and how they conduct their operations. As an example, we are currently in the process of building a new EMA space, a new 911 space consolidated. We recently invested in new space for the Board of Elections. We recently built a new crime lab. So, we're continually trying to figure out ways that we can be a bit more strategic with our, with our facility space. This past year, we've been looking at an opportunity for consolidating multiple facilities throughout the county and multiple departments into a facility in the Bond Hill area, the, what is known as the current Mercy Health Facility in Bond Hill. We've had several public discussions on this matter, and today, I wanted to recommend to the Board that we advance and execute a purchase agreement related to that opportunity. And we'll walk the Board quickly through a synopsis of this opportunity, as well as the purchase agreement. So, and again, a lot of this you have seen before, but this is an image of the facility, 1701 Mercy Health Place. The prospective tenants that we are talking about in this consolidation would be the Department of Job and Family Services, Developmental Disability Services, Public Health, Environmental Services, the Veteran Services Commission, which just presented here moments ago, and the Office of Addiction Response. Just a bit about the facility itself. This is Class A office space, roughly 368,000 square feet. There is, there are new workstations, ergonomic workstations installed, roughly valued at around 15 million. There is new IT and AV equipment. There is a tremendous amount of surface and garage parking, in total, around 1,600 spaces. There is a security system. There are multiple boardrooms in the facility. There is clinic space, in, in quotes, clinic space. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, yes, item two and, items two and three are related today. Um, they are a resolution authorizing the execution of a purchase agreement for acquisition of real estate and improved property at seventeen oh one Mercy Place in Cincinnati, Ohio, as well as item three, which is a budget adjustment in the amount of three million dollars for uh, depo- the deposit on that acquisition uh, and due diligence expenses. Um, I do have a uh, brief presentation I wanted to, to walk through, Commissioners. Um, you've seen most of this before. There is a little bit new, but uh, just to set the stage. So first and foremost, for anyone who may be watching at home, as the Board is very well aware, um, the, the county owns and operates uh, a large amount of real estate, a large number of buildings. Um, downtown alone, uh, we have roughly six buildings over uh, two point five million square feet of real estate. Uh, we are routine, as it relates to our facility space, we are routinely looking for ways uh, to do better, to be more efficient, uh, to be more effective uh, with the homes uh, for um, our employees and how they conduct their operations. Um, as an example, we are um, currently in the process of, of building a new EMA space, a new nine-one-one space consolidated. Uh, we recently invested in new space for the Board of Elections. We recently built a new crime lab. So we're continually trying to figure out ways uh, that we can be a bit more uh, strategic with our uh, with our facility space. Uh, this past year, uh, we've been looking at an opportunity uh, for consolidating multiple facilities uh, throughout the county and multiple departments uh, into a uh, facility in the Bond Hill area, the, uh, what is known as the current Mercy Health Facility in Bond Hill. Uh, we've had several um, uh, public discussions on this matter and today I wanted to recommend to the Board uh, that we advance and execute uh, a uh, purchase agreement related to that opportunity. And we'll walk the Board quickly through uh, a some, uh, synopsis of this opportunity as well as uh, the purchase agreement. So um, and again, a lot of this you have seen before, but uh, this is an image of the facility, seventeen oh one Mercy Health Place. Uh, the prospective tenants uh, that we are talking about in this consolidation would be uh, the Department of Job and Family Services, Developmental Disability Services, Public Health, Environmental Services, uh, the Veteran Services Commission, which uh, just presented here moments ago, uh, and the Office of Addiction Response. Uh, just a bit about the facility itself. Um, this is um, Class A office space, roughly three hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet. Um, there is, there are new work sta- ergonomic workstations installed roughly valued at around fifteen million. Uh, there is new IT and AV equipment. Uh, there is a tremendous amount of surface and garage parking in total, uh, around sixteen hundred spaces. Uh, there is a security system. There are multiple boardrooms in the facility. There is clinic space uh, in, well, in quotes, clinic space, uh, facilitating direct access and service opportunities, uh, but it's set up as, as a, as a clinic. Uh, the, the building is uh, built and, and suited for a, and includes a cafeteria and a grab and go market. Uh, there's lobby space. There's uh, outdoor amenities and gathering spaces. It is located on a sort of bus line. Um, total acreage is around twenty-one point three acres and as I mentioned, there is uh, significant parking um, on the site. In terms of the rationale, as I, as I, as I alluded to in, in my opening comments, um, the, the purpose of doing this is really, um, there are multiple uh, reasons for uh, recommending this to the Board. Uh, first, as I indicated, we operate, own and operate a large number of buildings. Many of those buildings are uh, just frankly put old. Um, our county facilities office does their absolute best to keep these operating efficiently, but when you have buildings that are approaching a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-five years old, uh, it gets, it gets difficult. Uh, so shedding our deferred maintenance liabilities associated with these uh, buildings is important. We have close to a hundred million dollars uh, in deferred maintenance uh, tabulated on all of these facilities combined. Um, in turn, uh, the, the newer building is centrally located. It includes free parking for employees, modern amenities and furnishings. It's simply a better, improved work environment. Uh, it is actually uh, a downsized footprint from where we currently are and all of the faci- all of the operations that we are currently talking about, not to mention those that we might continue to bring into the fold here, uh, assume uh, roughly uh, just over four hundred thousand square feet. Uh, this uh, opportunity in this building would take it down to around three hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet. Uh, we've also discussed uh, with the Board, the need, the continual need for what we call swing space uh, for county operations, uh, disaster recovery space. So every time in a, in a, in a county of this size, uh, when you have, whether it's work going on or something that impacts a facility space and you need to move someone for a period of time, uh, we have this continually. Uh, we are currently renting space for smaller departments that easily could have been um, placed into, into this facility had it existed at this point in time. Um, and uh, improved customer service uh, as well, just in a better operating environment. Uh, we did hold a community meeting out in Bond Hill on, on August eighth. Uh, there, uh, in that meeting, I think it also highlighted uh, several other benefits of, of this proposal, uh, including uh, establishing a stable employer hub uh, in a building which is currently in the process of being vacated. Uh, it uh, also would, would locate expertise, um, county expertise within uh, the Bond Hill community. When we were out in, in the community at that, at that meeting, we had several conversations uh, with residents of the Bond Hill community, um, that quite frankly, um, we would have had anyway, but the fact that we are, are now engaged in a more fundamental conversation with the Bond Hill community, uh, it just expedites and, and makes those conversations more efficient. So for instance, we had a uh, particular resident ask, uh, who was working on a new CDC or Community Development Corporation for Bond Hill, asked for the county's assistance and we are now engaging with that individual. Um, we had uh, a lot of conversations about utilizing the space, uh, the facility space for use by the community. Uh, the community had asked for um, a, a discussion around utilizing uh, some of the space uh, for uh, community council meetings, that type of thing. We're certainly uh, looking to facilitate uh, those conversations, uh, as well as um, just other conversations of that came out of that uh, August eighth meeting in terms of very specific resident um, concerns around, uh, around the building, uh, that we'll continue to uh, entertain conversations on. Um, there was a conversation as well about the parking arrangement with uh, uh, the neighboring Corinthian Baptist Church, uh, and we've had um, continued conversations uh, with uh, with the leadership of the, of the church as well, uh, to make sure that that arrangement continues. Uh, in terms of a financial uh, review of the, in, again, the Board has seen this before, but um, the purchase price is ninety-five million. Uh, this comes from several sources of funding. Uh, the first is a lease termination fee uh, that was negotiated with Mercy Health of, in the amount of thirty million dollars, uh, which immediately brings uh, the, the acquisition into the ballpark of something that the county could uh, begin to actually discuss. Um, the remainder of the, of the acquisition uh, would be funded from several sources, building sale proceeds, uh, Developmental Disability Services funding and Job and Family Services funding. So aside from the building sale proceeds, no general funds or other funds uh, would be included uh, in the acquisition. Uh, in total, uh, when you get down to the, uh, the, the price at which we would be um, purchasing this for, you're talking about a hundred and seventy-six dollars a square foot, uh, which is within the competitive average of this type of space uh, on, on the market. Um, just to reflect some prior steps, uh, that, that we, we, the county has taken on this, we've had uh, again, uh, Board staff meeting presentations. We did meet with the Bond Hill Community Council Executive Committee. We had the public meeting with Bond Hill Community back on August eighth. We've held uh, an employee town hall meeting to discuss this concept with employees. Uh, we've met several times with our employee advisory committee, uh, and we've also engaged in some initial space planning with the um, impacted departments just to understand the, the fit of the, of these departments into the facility. I'm going to walk very briefly through the purchase agreement. Uh, some of this is repetitive, but I did just, since I'm recommending today the uh, the execution uh, or the passage of a resolution authorizing execution of the purchase agreement, I did just want, want to uh, walk briefly through the terms of the agreement. Uh, the Board has received a summary of this um, previously. Uh, but again, the purchase agreement sets out uh, the purchase price. I did just include a note uh, that as we've, has been previously reported, the building was initially sold for eighty-five point eight million back in twenty seventeen, uh, was transferred again for a hundred million in twenty twenty-one. There is a deposit of tw- two point three seven five million. Uh, this is refundable through the sixty-day inspection period, which I will get to shortly, uh, and that item is included, the uh, the deposit is included as, as a separate agenda item today. Uh, there are various documents uh, to be conveyed at closing, including bills of sale, uh, deeds, um, various closing uh, documents and records, et cetera, uh, that are listed in the agreement. Uh, the agreement, the purchase agreement details an inspection period, as I said, of sixty days. Uh, the closing date is identified, the outside closing date is identified as uh, being November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. During the inspection period, the county has the right uh, to uh, conduct whatever sorts of, of studies, analysis, um, uh, inspections as needed in order to get comfortable uh, with the property and to make sure that there are, are no uh, major faults uh, or issues with the, with the property. If the county is not satisfied uh, with anything, uh, including the suitability of the property, the results of inspections, reviews, feasibility studies, uh, the county would uh, notify the seller uh, of that fact and the agreement is null and void. The deposit is returned with interest to the county. Uh, the uh, purchase agreement specifies the various closing documents. Again, as I indicated, deed, bill of sale, closure statements, uh, a lease termination um, with, with Mercy Health, which is a part of this. Uh, the purchase agreement discusses uh, things that would occur under the uh, under the agreement if uh, uh, for example, a, a portion of the property were condemned or taken under eminent domain during the course of the inspection period, uh, if, if the property was damaged during the inspection period. All these things are specified in the agreement. Uh, it specifies that the county is to take, uh, is to obtain a title examination. Uh, it also um, goes into detail on the different agreements and representations and warranties that the seller and the purchaser are making uh, to each other. These are very standard and boilerplate. Um, I included these in the summary uh, that I provided to the Board, but essentially uh, uh, the seller and the purchaser, in this case, the county, are representing to each other that we have the authority to make this agreement and to enter into this agreement and there's no third-party agreements that would prevent us from doing so, et cetera. Uh, within the purchase agreement, there is also a Mercy County Agreement, which would be executed. Uh, this is much simpler in form, uh, essentially that Mercy agrees to pay thirty million as payment for a facilitation of the lease termination. Uh, Mercy is also to continue operating the building until closing. We are actually working on a, an amendment uh, to this um, item uh, that would allow Mercy to stay in the building for up to six months, uh, in exchange for assuming the operating responsibility and costs over that period of time. Um, this serves um, a couple of different benefits. Number one, uh, it would um, uh, ensure that uh, we did not have to pay for the operating, uh, the routine operation and maintenance costs associated with the building over that time, uh, as well as our facilities department could uh, begin to work side by side uh, with the people who are currently operating the building to understand how it works and to make sure that when we ultimately were to take it over, uh, that we had learned what we needed to over the course of that time. Uh, Mercy is also to work uh, with the county on the dedication of the right-of-way for Mercy Place. That's the road that goes into the facility, uh, which was built to public standards, but was not ever officially dedicated over to the city. Uh, so that would occur uh, during that time as well. Uh, there is also um, prospective uh, building disposition associated with this. Uh, this is not included in the purchase-sale agreement, but as the Board is aware, uh, there are four buildings, JFS, um, uh, Environmental Services and Public Health, which are in two fifty William Howard Taft. Uh, DDS has uh, facilities at fifteen twenty Madison Road and on Kingsley Drive. The thought is that the county would utilize the Community Improvement Corporation for disposition of those properties, uh, with a focus on catalyzing the community economic, community and economic development. Um, and the Board has spoken heavily about uh, its desire for, for housing. So we would ultimately put that RFP out, specify to the policy direction uh, of the Board of County Commissioners and the two DDS facilities, uh, which ultimately were purchased and renovated with DDS levy funding. Um, the, the dollars, uh, as the dollars for those buildings would go back into the DDS fund. I know that Board in particular, I would like to have some policy level discussions uh, with the Commissioners about some thoughts that they have on those facilities. But ultimately, we will be looking uh, over the due diligence period for policy direction from the Board on um, directions to uh, to take uh, this particular disposition. Uh, with that, Commissioners, I wanted to try to keep this brief. Uh, that concludes my, my summary of the opportunity as well as the uh, brief summary of the purchase agreement. I will note that Roger Friedman and Steve Gay from the County Prosecutor's Office uh, are here. They're the attorneys that worked uh, this uh, agreement with the attorneys for the seller. First of all, I want to thank them for their effort. I know it was uh, uh, took a little bit of time, but they uh, they, they got it complete. So I want to thank them for that. Also, if at any point in time during the discussion, uh, gentlemen, if there's something you feel I left out or something you feel the Board should know more specifically about the purchase agreement, please feel free to uh, uh, to approach or to let me know. We'll make sure you're called upon. So Commissioners, with that, I'll turn it back over to you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Um, I do have some uh, prepared questions, but just based on what you um, just reported, you, you slipped in. You said we've got an amendment coming that would allow Mercy to stay there six months. Um, is this six months after we purchase it?
Yeah, it'd be six months after closing. So it would be at a time when we would not be, yet be in the building.
Okay. And then during that time, will they assume, is there any rent, utilities, water bill? Who's paying for that?
Yeah, so they would, they would pay for all general operations associated with the, with uh, the operations and maintenance of the facility. Um, our initial look at this is that, uh, because initially the thought was if we were going to do this, it would be uh, for rent. Uh, but the, uh, from a facilities perspective, it would probably be more advantageous just to have them take care of the reg- routine operations and maintenance of the facility, which is about the same as they would be paying in rent on a monthly basis. So that is, that would be the uh.
Yeah. Usually when you pay rent, sometimes utilities is included, but a lot of people renting stuff in utilities when you're, uh, unless you're running an incubator. But most of the time, you pay your own utilities. You pay your own gas and electric, which by the way, I think they've got a hearing and that's going to go up. And then you pay your own water bill.
Yeah, so they would be, they would be paying, they would be paying that, correct?
Right. But I'm just saying, you said it would equal what rent is and I don't think that's necessarily accurate because I would be looking for rent plus utilities usually if I'm renting out a space.
Yeah, so uh, in, in this particular case, um, the, the thought was to, especially because we will be working with them and learning from them on the site as it relates to the uh, how to operate the facility, that we're be, going to be getting a benefit from them being in that building and wanted to make sure that it was worth their while to do that.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to, because you threw that amendment in pretty quickly. Okay, well, a couple, I do have a couple of questions. Uh, when we started this process, I had some initial questions and I want to make sure that those questions are out in the open. I had a question of one, Mercy Health was in a lease. They would have to continue paying, which would have equaled thirty million dollars. I was trying to find a way that the community could benefit from it and particularly with the high property taxes and those kind of things, maybe, or development, uh, because they made a lot of promises, some on writing, some was verbal. And so I'd asked if we could possibly see if we can get a ten million dollar fund to compensate. And uh, I was told by you that uh, I guess Mercy rejected that, or I hope somebody asked. The second thing I asked was, of course, I told you that they still would owe the thirty million. My next component was um, our proposal to move the county employees there, uh, which I think is uh, I, I don't think that's a bad thing, but the problem that I had was that when it was sold to them, uh, they were going to be bringing seventeen hundred fifty uh, supposedly high-paying jobs. And uh, they didn't uh, adhere to that. Since that time, um, I'm, I'm happy that uh, the city has been able, has gotten paid back their uh, seven million dollars. Uh, the other thing I had concerns about, I wanted to bring up was uh, to see how Bond Hill felt about having two major social service agencies down the street from each other, making the community a capital for social services. Community Action Agency and Jobs and Family Services essentially uh, does a lot of the same things, even though Hamilton County Community Action Agency is not an agency of, of us. Um, and I was very instrumental in, in getting the CAA there, which I thought was a great thing uh, many, many years ago. Uh, the only additional thing they have that we wouldn't have is that they have the, the head start, but in there they've got training, they do the Duke Energy Bills, uh, they do, they've done a lot of stuff that we do. Uh, so I thought that would be um, hard and I didn't know if uh, other communities, if a Hyde Park would allow us to have something like that. So, but if Bond Hill's okay with it, I wanted to at least bring it up. Um, and of course, Bond Hill being a community uh, of homeowners who are really struggling and they also struggling to retain businesses, uh, Bond Hill, most of the people there, they have jobs, so they're not looking for jobs. Uh, they own homes, uh, but they want to make sure they have a thriving community. The other thing is I had a question about the relocation and how that would affect Corinthian Baptist Church because they were in on this deal with Mercy and uh, Pastor Casey Smith at one point was not aware of it. I know we have verbally said that they will continue, but I'd like to keep it like we got the parking deals downtown, uh, like we have the parking deals for when the Reds got games, like we have the parking deals where when the Bengals got games, parking deal when uh, uh, Heritage Bank has a concert. I want something in writing that will be uh, extended beyond, you know, years and years and years. I want it to be part of uh, what it is, like with all these other deals. They're, they have no expiration dates. They're, they're there forever. I want a forever for that, so there won't be any problems. And then my other question was, we're paying for this with prime real estate that's downtown. JFS is located downtown and everybody knows downtown real estate is more uh, in terms of prime than something that's out in a particular neighborhood. So we've got some prime real estate and then we also have some real estate that's in some communities that is redeveloping, but making sure that as it redevelops, it's not gentrified. And so I wanted to see if we could tie up the deed, but that's not propo- that's not proposed today, where we would have uh, affordable and not, a lot of times we leave these downtown, they say, oh man, it's so raggedy. It's so, oh my God. And then next thing you know, it's million-dollar condos. And they said all of them are sold. And they got a great view. And so I want to make sure that if we're going to say we're for affordable housing, that we tie our deeds. that we tie our deeds to affordable housing. Because what happens is they come in for a couple of years, they get the tax credits for affordability, then they sell the property. And then when they sell the property, then a new person comes in after they done got all, they've gutted it for the tax credits, then they say, oh, we're going to do luxury condos. And by that time, it's usually some different elected officials, some different people, and then they say, we don't remember anything that was promised 20 years or 25 years ago. So I'm looking at trying to, I get some more permanent type of situations. So I wanted to point that out. As a result of these questions, the following has transpired. According to Mr. Ludo, Bon Hill Community Council fully supports this initiative. So that means Bon Hill, don't call me, you said that the whole community is for it. I shouldn't be able to find any houses, people who own houses after this is done, saying what happened, because Mr. Ludo has indicated that Bon Hill is in full support. Number two, but health, Mercy Health has now repaid the City of Cincinnati. And we helped raise the issue, and I want to thank the council down there and the mayor. $7 million, I've read in the paper, has been turned back in to the City of Cincinnati. My understanding from a few people at Bon Hill, they now are going to, Mr. Ludo told them, go down to the City Hall. And now instead of the $10 million that I was trying to get for them, the City Hall now will be able to get them some money. So it's down to City Hall, according to what I've been told. The negotiating price we had is 95 million. Of course, they're going to put the 30 million towards that. And then we're taking the proceeds from the sale. And so my question, Mr. Ludo, is we talk about we taking the proceeds, but the buildings haven't been sold, but we've got to pay upfront. Where will we be getting that, those dollars from?
Do you want me to answer it? Let me answer that. Yes. So, yeah, so the, you have the 95 million, so the, the 30 million will be applied at, at closing. The building disposition proceeds, as you mentioned, are really the proceeds that are not going to happen. We can't sell the building, obviously, until we have a place to put people. That will be advanced from the County General Fund, and that will be repaid to the General Fund when we ultimately sell the, sell those buildings.
So, okay, so we're going to pay it out of our General Fund, but it does not affect the $50 million, I mean, doesn't affect the $50 million gap?
No, it will not, it will not affect the operating budget for next year, no.
So one thing I'll put out that won't be so popular, I hope it doesn't affect us not being able to give a property tax rollback, because now we're able to have money, and the rollback is really General Fund sales tax dollars. And I'm just putting that out there. So when I come back talking about a full rollback, we can't say now, we broke, we broke. Next is, I told you about Corinthian Baptist, I want to make sure that that is in writing. I want to put on record that there is a, not a verbal agreement, but a forever agreement. So for parking, you've worked with them on that?
Yeah, and actually, there is, there is actually a, a document that runs with the land that says that this is what the parking arrangement is. So it is fully prescribed. We've had no amendment to it. It is what it is. And, and I've indicated directly to the church that we would adhere to that.
Okay. Okay, we'll take those down. Based on those questions that I, from my perspective that I've had, I would support this initiative. But I want to make sure, I, I do want the deed tied. I would hope I can work with that. I think that's very important. And then, secondly, Corinthian Baptist, you guys were very smart. See, they tied it to the land. And so even if we wanted to come in and do something, we couldn't do it. Way to go. Pastor Casey Smith, you guys were smart. Because these things change. The original group that had the Mercy building with the ribbon cutting and the hard hats, they're no longer around. Then another group got it. Then Mercy, that was just Mercy, they got bought out, now they not, no longer headquartered necessarily here. And so I appreciate that. But those were my concerns, and appreciate that. Seems like those concerns have been addressed except for the deed as we move forward. So I'll open it up to Vice President.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation. So on this particular project, we've been talking about this for a couple of years, to my recollection. And I will admit that I started at a no on this one. I was, I was concerned about a couple of things. Initially, about moving some of the county services off, what I call off-campus. So the campus is where we are, right? The courthouse, the jail, the administration building. But then I came to realize that the departments that were being moved into the Bon Hill facility aren't on campus. I mean, you know, Environmental Services and Public Health and DDS, VSC is nearby, but I understand VSC is supportive of this. And then JFS is the other one, the large one. But come to find out, after COVID, many, many of those employees were not working actually downtown, but rather in the field. And so it didn't make sense for them to come down, touch base in Almsen Depke, and then head up to the field. And so that workforce had greatly diminished in the Almsen Depke building. And so my concern about this campus setting idea went away, and I saw the wisdom in, in having these departments that were identified move into the Bon Hill site. Another concern I had was related to accessibility. As much as I like to think downtown is accessible to people, I recognize not everyone agrees with me on this. The Board of Elections is a good example of this, by the way, where, you know, we've got a facility in Bon Hill that is actually more central in the county to the residents of the entire county. It's on a bus line, and it has free parking. I don't, you know, all of us hear about how every meeting I take, somebody is late because they couldn't find parking. And so I, I recognize that that's a huge challenge for people. And so I, I come, come to realize that the Bon Hill location is actually more accessible than JFS, for instance, and some of the other buildings that we have. And literally accessible too, because it's a newer building. And so it has to comply with advanced ADA requirements. And so that, that concern went away. My third concern was about cost. I was very concerned about purchasing a new building. This is a nice building. Now, I think our employees deserve a good building, and I think our clients do as well, but I anticipated a high price tag for the building. It, it isn't, what we're paying is, is market rate, and you can see from the dispositions recently that that is true. But come to find out, we're not using any General Fund dollars for this at all. Mercy is kicking in 30 million. DDS, JFS, you have different funding sources, so those are being utilized. And then the disposition of the buildings we own now will be used for this. So there are no additional dollars coming out of the General Fund for the purchase. And so I, I was glad to know that. And also, this deferred maintenance piece is no small thing. We have $100 million of deferred maintenance that will go away, because we're vacating those buildings that need the deferred maintenance. That's $100 million. So that is no joke, and, and that is a big win, I think, for the county. I was also just generally concerned about what the employees would think. So we've had some town hall meetings, when I say we, I mean you, Jeff, to gauge what the employees thought about this move. I think there were questions, I know there were questions, but those questions have been answered. And I think generally speaking, and I've talked to some anecdotally, the employees are really looking forward to a new, bright, improved space where they've got access to a cafeteria and, and some of the other amenities in the building. And then that transfers then to the folks that we serve, you know, the clients coming into a facility that is also speaks to the nature of how seriously we take the work that we're doing, particularly JFS, when we are dealing with a lot of families, and, and the free parking. I can't say enough about the free parking. So I took a tour of the facility just to make sure that I better understood that all of these things were the case. You know, the building was nice, the parking was, was robust, which it is. And then we had the public hearing out in the Bon Hill community, because that's the other piece, right? We had to make sure that the Bon Hill community was on board. I attended that meeting. There were some concerns related to the, the church next door. Those have been resolved. I know, Jeff, you've talked to Casey Smith about the parking arrangement, and that has been secured. There was talk about the community having access to the building itself for maybe community council meetings, kind of talking about this partnership between the county and Bon Hill. And I know that is something that's being worked on. And then one of the major issues was related to the agreement they had with Mercy. Now, we weren't part of this agreement, but there was concern about the money that would be paid back, because Mercy is not following through on what they said they were going to do in that facility. And so that money doesn't go to the county, it goes to the city. And so I know the county had a lot to do with securing that commitment from Mercy. And so I think it was actually the day of the public hearing, a letter went forward to the City of Cincinnati, saying that $7 million would go back to the city. And now it is in the city's hands to decide how to disperse those dollars. I mean, my expectation would be, if not all, the vast majority would go to Bon Hill, but that is not for the county commissioners to decide. And then lastly, originally, when this was first pitched, it's been a couple of years ago, there was some talk about the disposition of our buildings, Almsen Depke in particular. And, but, but keeping in mind that there are, there are other buildings in different communities where we will be vacating those buildings, and what's going to happen with those buildings, and what does it mean to the community. And so particularly related to Almsen Depke, and I know we've given thought to all of these things, I did some, you know, research of my own to figure out what it would mean to have residential in the Almsen Depke, which I'm told by developers could be fairly easily converted into residential. And this board has talked over and over again about the need for affordable housing. And so I am, I'm excited about the opportunity of that building being retrofitted into something that is a need for the community. And there will be folks in that building 24/7, if it's a residential facility, unlike JFS, where we've got a dwindling workforce working there, because they're out in the field. And so the economic impact around that building has been reduced dramatically since COVID. And so I, I think, and I've talked to, as I said, some developers, to get a better understanding of the economy related to that. And so if, if it does come to pass that that is redeveloped into residential, it's a 24/7 activity around that building with residential folks living there, I really think that will be a benefit to the surrounding area, including ourselves, by the way, because we're not so far away from that building. So I was able to check the boxes as we went through. It's, it's taken some time to get all the questions answered. But by way of the concerns about the taxpayer, the clients, the employees, the Bon Hill community, and then the communities in which we have buildings now, I feel like all the questions have been answered. And I, I do think there's a tremendous upside to moving into the facility. So I am prepared to support the resolutions that are in front of us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
You guys have said it all, but it's necessary for me to make my statements also. For years, when I first came as commissioner, I was saying, my effort is to try to make sure that we don't just focus on the downtown area, but that we look outside of Cincinnati for, for all services and all purchases and all development. Believe it or not, the majority of our residents live outside of the downtown area. For me, this is a win-win. I looked at it as, for as a commissioner, and also as a social worker. I had a lot of questions, but initially, there was no doubt that this would be good for us, for the people, for Hamilton County, essentially located. You go over to JFS, I've been over there for just visiting and being a judge for some of the things they do over there. When I say a judge, I mean just looking at celebrations for the holidays. And it's so gloomy and doomy over there. And so I think about the community that comes in there, the parents that come in, the staff that have to work there. I had to put on my social work hat, and I know they try to decorate as much as they can and all that. That's our building. But I thought it would be great, just something as simple as staff having a cafeteria. I mean, that may not be a big deal for us, but just to be able to get away after you see a parent that maybe you were not able to help, and to be able to go into a cafeteria to kind of chill a little bit. The health and wellness equipment that's at this facility. We talk a lot about trying to improve our wellness among our staff. That's already there. We don't have to pay for it. It remains there. And also combining all the multiple departments in one space. I mean, you can do a one-stop deal. You just write down which ones you want to go to. Maybe I'm a veteran, and then I'll go over to JFS next door. And so to have everything in one spot, not everything, but a lot of things. Maybe you're, have a child with disability, you can do all of that at once, hopefully. And then the opportunity to sell our old buildings will be revenue for us. There would be millions and millions of dollars for repairs, was said earlier, if we tried to repair these other buildings. So we don't have to worry about that. We can try to put, put at least that one right now on the market. And then parking was brought up, no cost for plenty of parking. And I've always been concerned since I first came about safety for our employees and, and having to walk from wherever they are. And not only the safety, but some are maybe not able to walk as far to, to get to our building from where they park. So just to be able to save that little bit of money when you're not maybe making as much as you want, and to be able to just pull in and park and not worry about paying. And as we look at a community asset, this definitely is a community asset which will generate businesses in Bon Hill. And as we know, there are not a lot of businesses in Bon Hill. But as soon as our staff move in, I could imagine that the riches up there that's not open, I think somebody will open it right away, because there would be plenty of employees that could go right up the street for that. So as far as I'm concerned, and we look financially where we are, and I'm fine with where we are financially, and that we're doing the right thing, and this is a positive for me, and I'm willing to go for it. That's all I had.
Thank you. I have one other thing I needed to add, Mr. Ludo. As we're doing the due diligence, I did get a call that said that they were whistleblower, did not want to be identified, but indicated, I don't know if it's true or not, but there's a, they said a major plumbing issue. So I would hope that we put that on the list for the due diligence before we made a final decision. And then I do want to add, basically what you said, I got to give kudos to Pastor Casey Smith, because they tied up the land. So no matter, that wasn't something we came and negotiated. We had no choice. It's tied to the land. If we buy, whoever buy the land, he's got it. So we can't say that we, it was because of those people at that church, the trustees or whatever, they, they tied up the land. I asked about it, but it's nothing we could do, because they're tied to the land. And that's what I want to see us do with the buildings that we have. And then lastly, I just want to say Mercy, you know, I'm going along with the deal, but I think we could have gotten more. When I look at what Mercy is worth, billions of dollars. And when I look at, we could have, but we didn't. But I'm glad that I stood up and exposed the $30 million. And I want to think, and then they say, we going to write the check right away, because they owed it. But they didn't have to do it. They could have strung, strung it out. But because of the, originally, they said, oh, we didn't, we don't owe that money, and we don't have to do it. And then the heat came, and they did it. And so I just want to reiterate that it wasn't just a, oh, yeah, they want to do it. I think we could have got the $7 million that they owed, and another $10 million. But I'm willing to move forward in the sake of, we need to start moving forward. So I just wanted to add that to the due diligence list. I did mention to, that to you, Jeff, and I just wanted to make sure it's kind of out in the open.
Yeah, no, Commissioner, no, thank you for that. And we followed up a bit on that already. I think our initial thoughts are that things are okay there, but that, as you indicated, that is the precise purpose for the due diligence that we'll be doing. We have a lot of renovations to do in that building, once we, once we get in there officially, all funded in the same manner I talked about earlier. We'll be bringing those forward as, as part of the, the, whether they're separate items or as part of the budget for 2025, but to the, to the point that we can't do those, there's major, major problems, right? So we will be in there, we'll be investigating all of that, and we'll make sure that everything is good to go in the facility. And if it's not, then we'll certainly report back to the board, and we'll talk about options from there. But my initial conversations with folks that know the building very well indicate that it's structurally sound, and we'll report back as we get additional information.
Okay, great, because I'm voting on it based on what you have told us. I make a motion to approve items two and three.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Yes.